Does, before we get started, I just, the, does everybody from the Budget Advisory Committee, I'm not sure if you were, if you, if you have the budget sheets from the school department dated March 10?
No, you didn't have enough of them when you gave them.
Right, we didn't have enough copies to hand out.
Okay.
We felt really left out.
Apologize for that.
Oh, I only saw the purple.
Yep, do they have revenue sheets?
Um, places anywhere.
Okay. Before I get started, one of the things, one of the things I would like to discuss is basically I put together a presentation that I'll be doing next week. If there's any changes, we still are waiting for a number of things to come in. The biggest thing, I guess, what's becoming more apparent is the state budget. And if the state budget isn't approved as is, then obviously our funding, our subsidy numbers would change and probably go down close to $200,000. Our ultimate goal is to come in with a 0% increase on local taxes, which is a decrease in our overall budget from last year. And I know I've reported on that, so for those that were at the last meeting, a lot of this information is repeated. However, I would like to, if people have questions that they wanted to ask now, it may make, or it may make sense for you to ask me some questions now, and then I can quickly go through this presentation, because you're going to see this presentation again, for the most part, next Tuesday. So if anybody has any immediate questions, I can answer those, or I can go through quickly, go through the presentation. Same with the Budget Advisory as well. You guys have any questions either tonight or any other time? Just email me or contact me, and I'll try to answer those. One of the, one of the reasons we haven't made a lot of changes, we still are short. I'll just give you an overview. Our budget, the overall budget is a decrease of about $122,000 from last year. The total budget, including adult education, currently is around $13,937,754. The amount in this tentative or proposed budget that needs to be raised locally is $5,356,469. Our budget was, our budget was, our overall budget has decreased. Although our overall budget has decreased, we are receiving about $197,269, potentially less from the state this year in state subsidy. As a result, we are currently $168,298 away from having a 0% increase in the local taxes. It is our goal to prepare and present a final budget that does not increase local taxes. Based on our current projections, we are very confident that we'll be able to do this over the next few months. A lot of things, we're still waiting to get information on a number of things. Our priorities are obvious, as I mentioned before, to prepare a budget that maintains our existing programs and services with a 0% increase in taxes on the local contribution. We are in the process of consolidating resources with the town and other school systems. And I know, I talked to Kathy briefly before coming over here, and I guess some of that has changed, so we need to talk about that tonight. The proposed local contribution, again, is a little over $5 million. Total budget, I've already mentioned, is around $14 million. The, we also want to continue to address our NEAS concerns. We're in the process of converting the high school and middle school over to natural gas, installing a new boiler. The initial proposals that we did receive on the work at the middle school were lower than what they, what the actual numbers came in. So our process, or what we're actually going to be able to do, it's less than what we originally had thought. NEAS is a New England, it's the accreditation, it's the New England Association of Secondary.
Schools and colleges.
Schools and colleges. It's basically the, the organization that we get our accreditation through, and they're the ones that identified at their last visit, they're the ones that identified and placed us on probation for our, for our facilities. And so we've addressed over the last couple of years, or over the last few years, we've addressed a number of those concerns, and we will continue. The biggest one, biggest steps next time are, are coming up are the, obviously the boiler at the middle school and the heat and system, converting those over to natural gas. There's obviously short and long-term building renovations. We currently, we recently just heard that we were 27th on the list for school renovations, which is disappointing. However, that is, we'll still move forward with projects, and we have things planned out. And obviously, the next step is the heating systems at both the middle and high school. We'd like to maintain our existing programs. We decreased our, the amount of money over EPS, or the 100% over EPS, by an additional $211,886 this year. And if you remember my last presentation, we have really focused on that. We've really decreased the amount of money that we're over in EPS. And quite honestly, if we hadn't, I'm not quite sure where our budget would be. Just, I mean, we, we've really lowered that number, focused on it, and still it's, we're still short with our, with the amount of money, or we're still over 168,000 away from where we want to be. We want to continue to support and demonstrate student progress as well. In the warrant articles, you'll notice there are some increases. One is in adult education. There's a little, about $11,000 increase in adult education. $7,000 of that is roughly their reduction in state subsidy. The rest, the rest are salaries and benefits. We did put it, put in a classroom maintenance plan, which is $5,000 per school to do classroom maintenance. There was already $5,000 in the high school, so we did add $5,000 to the middle school and the community school. And you will notice, it's not an increase on the overall budget, but we did need, need to move money from purchase services to debt service, and that was money from expiring, or money that we had in, I believe it was an expiring bond. And there's $52,607 that moved from one line to another, but it's not an increase. But when you look at it, it'll show up as, it'll, you'll see the movement and wonder, you may wonder what that, what that particular amount was for. We needed to do that so that we would, purchase services, we had planned to go to a bond, and then we decided that we could do the work, or felt we could do the work with the money we had in our budget. So that's why we needed to move it from purchase services to, or move it from debt service to purchase services, so that we'd be able to do the repairs on the middle school and high school using that money. One thing to remember that the 150, one of the, one of the reasons why we, or one of the things that have assisted our overall budget is the fact that we have about 157, or over 157,000 in a federal jobs bill grant, that this money is used to preserve jobs. This grant money is not included in our budget. It's outside of the budget because it's a grant. So any of the positions or services, or anything that's part of this actual grant, will need to be, the school committee will need to decide next year if we're going to add it back in. So we actually have 157,000 of our total budget moved out into this grant, and that's what it was intended specifically to preserve and, and create jobs. Currently, on the 10-year local contribution history, you'll see that last year, 2010, 2011, there was an increase. We did, we did ask the, the Lisbon community to raise taxes. They're currently, with the tentative budget, with a $168,000 increase, or the difference that we have right now, it does show that there is an increase. But as I've said before, our goal is to come in flat, so that amount will be the same as last year, which would be around $4,900, let's see, $4,914,573, which, if you look over the course of the last eight years, those numbers are actually lower than what they were from, or roughly 2006, 2005, 2004, 2003. So we did have a trend of a decrease all the way up until, as you can see, 2008, and then a slight increase, and then a decrease, and then we have increased last year. And we're hoping to stay flat this year. One of the things that we wanted to make sure we're clear with is the difference between our total budget and what the actual, what we received from the state and what the local contribution is. So if you look, last year, we had, the state contributed about 8 million, a little over $8 million to our budget. That was a decrease of about $663,000. The transition amount last year, and that amount is for, because the state does not meet their, the obligation 55% funding, the town has to raise that locally. So there's an additional $283,000 from last year that needed to be raised. The local contribution last year was $5,177,171, which was an increase of $262,598. We had over $1.1 million in reductions, and it was over 20 positions that we reduced, that we had to reduce last year. This year, as you can see, state contribution is less again, or is decreased by 197,000, so it's around 8 million. The transition amount increased to 287,000, and so the, currently the local contribution is $5,345,469, which, again, is that difference of 168,298 that I mentioned throughout this presentation. The reason why we feel confident that we are going to be able to reach a 0% on the local taxes is because, well, there's, there's various areas of potential savings, and there are a couple areas of cost. The biggest one, as I mentioned at the beginning, is this, this budget is relying on the state budget being passed. And if that's, if the numbers that we've been tentatively provided in our financial numbers, our ED 279 form, that the state sends us with our subsidy numbers, then we will be able to, those numbers will be accurate. If the state budget is not passed and things change, we could be going right back to the drawing board and have to look at what we're going to, what we're going to do. There's potential, we were supposed to receive consolidation money for, because our school met the state guidelines, and we became what they referred to as a donut hole. We became our own school system. Last year, we actually received, it was over $30,000, but then they took it away. They're currently in legislation now, trying to, there's, there's multiple legislation right now about not, not having those schools that did not consolidate not have to pay that penalty. So it probably will end up that we won't receive any money, but there's potential for money there. There's potential savings in contracted services. Over the last few years, it's been a lot easier to negotiate with people, especially our contracted services people, and we've been able to increase the amount of services that we've received without increasing the amount of cost to the district. Our energy conservation project, I, we received a proposal, or an overview from the Siemens company, and I believe that there's, there's potential, they are predicting that there's potential for energy savings by converting the high school and middle school over to natural gas. We're not quite sure what the total amount is, because we, when we went out for our fuel bid, we were, we used the 30,000 or so gallons of oil that we use for both those two schools, and we were told that the quote that we received would not be, would not be accurate until we gave them an actual number of gallons, or gallons that we would use. So we're not quite sure how much there is, but there's definitely savings there. Our insurance is currently budgeted for 10%. Every percentage that that comes in that's less than 10% is around $20,000 savings. We were, we currently, we thought our kindergarten enrollment, if, if by chance we didn't get about 100 or so kids, we may be able to reduce a position there. However, I will tell you that I don't, this, these numbers were accurate a few weeks ago, and I know that we have, I believe, over 60 students already registered for our pre-K program, or to be put in for the lottery for our pre-K program. So it looks like our numbers will stay consistent with close to about 100, so there may not be any savings there. There could potentially be additional retirements, resignations, depending on how this budget proposal goes in and the changes to the retirement system. We have done a transfer to our facilities line, and we are hoping to be able to buy things that we had originally put in our budget for next year, some equipment. We're hoping to be able to buy as much as we can with this year's money, and then that way there we were able to reduce it out of our budget. And transportation, over the last few years, we've saved a significant amount of money on transportation, and we have some, we're in the process of doing some rescheduling and potential reassignments, and feel that there's additional money that we could save in our transportation costs. One of the things that I reported on last year, that we just received new information on, is the school achievement and progress, progress list. For those that have been watched, looking at the papers, 10 more schools were identified as low-achieving schools. I just met with the high school faculty today, and the information that is, that we, that I provided to them is focused on that Title I money that the state put in for. Last year was around 12 million, this year it was 4 million. But they do have a process to identify schools. One of the things I wanted to share with you, and I'll share with the school committee, is that the, if you look at the, it's a progress, they basically take an average of the last three years of math and your reading scores. For the middle school and elementary, it's kneecaps and MEAs, and for the high school, it's the SAT. If you, if you look quickly, you'll see that the community school and middle school both continue to make progress. It's not as much as it was last year, but once you get to a certain amount, once you get to a certain percentage, it is difficult to continue to make that progress. And as you can see, we did have a, a lower test scores, or a percentage for the high school, and their progress went from being a positive 7.64% to a negative 3.56. The reason why I bring this up is because I've had a, I've looked at this really closely, and it's one of those things where I'm not quite sure how they pick those 10 schools. There's really no rhyme, but there is rhyme and reason. They have a formula that they use, and one of the things that really, that they look closely at is whether or not you're making progress. And so I met with the staff and informed them that we made progress. However, if you don't continue to make progress, you may or may not end up on this list. There are a number of schools, majority of them are all high schools, that are at the bottom of the percentage list. And one of the things I just, you know, I'm concerned that if we, if the high school continues to, if it doesn't continue to make progress, that we could be on that list. And the last thing that we wanted to deal with, and I'm glad we're not dealing with it right now, is, you know, having our school identified. The percentages, real quickly, you'll see that the three-year average at the, at the elementary school is 62.08% proficient. At the middle school, it's 59.73%, and then at the high school, it's 38.02%. And you'll notice, if you look to the right, you'll see that the high school's percentage last year was 34.91, which was almost 5-point-something percent less than it was the year before. So it takes a three-year average, and that's what they use for the title, that's, when you see the school achievement, that's what they use. We were not one of the schools identified. However, we are focused, we've done a lot with SAT preparation at the high school level, and the middle school and the community school both have continued to maintain. They're actually above the state average, which the state average is around 60.44%. So our elementary and middle schools continue to maintain or be above state average. The high school is, is where we're focused on right now, and trying to make sure that we keep them, keep, keep the high school making progress over the next few years. Last year, the potential impact on taxes, there is no impact. Our goal is obviously to have a 0% increase in taxes as a result of our budget. And in, in summary, we addressed a lot of, you know, Lisbon School Department addressed some very difficult budget decisions last year. Understanding the economic situation in Lisbon, we are preparing a budget that we feel still allows us to provide an adequate education to our students. Last year, we were forced to ask the Lisbon taxpayers for an additional amount of 262,598, even after making over 1.1 million in reductions. It has been our goal this year to keep the tax rate flat, and we are close to reaching that goal. It's just going to take, it'll take some time to get there.
And mostly because of items that are out of our control.
Basically, we're at the mercy of the state. We have no, you know, if you look at our numbers, we've done everything. Basically, we've decreased our budget, but the increase in state subsidy, uh, decrease in state subsidy, and also there was an increase in the base amount, you know, that we have to raise to get the state money. They increased that one by 200,000 or something, Rick?
The, to get, the local, the, over EPS?
Yeah, they increased it $197. They increased that 190, yeah, that's the, the base amount that we have to raise locally to get the state fund. They raised that from last year, so. They're, they're trying to force us to increase it on local taxes by what they're doing. Even though we reduced the budget, we've, we've still got to increase the local taxes, which we're working on.
And they're still not meeting their legal requirement of 55%.
Any questions? And one of the things, one of the things in our conversations that we want to hold off on is, if you ask, well, you know, you're coming in at 0%, why don't you just make those cuts now? Because those cuts are going to be very difficult to make. If we were to just take 168,000 out of our budget, there are conversations, very difficult conversations, we'd have to have with people, and I, I just think at this time, with everything that's going on, is to wait until all the cards are played and, and go from there. So we, we have, you know, we obviously, we know where we need to be, and hopefully things will fall into place for us, and I feel pretty confident that we're probably going to get some more retirements and resignations over the next, next few months.
They do the state till August, though, right?
What's that?
The budget ain't due to the state till August.
No.
Uh, no, we.
It's actually due to the state 30 days after it's voted in. You have to notify the state.
June, that's, that's.
Second Tuesday in June is the.
My friend.
So you don't, you, you don't want to have to give a layoff notice to somebody right now. You have to give them a notice, and you give them a notice, and then the funding changes, and you don't have to, this makes the, this makes. This makes the, this makes for, uh, bad morale. Makes for people unknowingly that are gonna have their job, but they're not gonna have the job. And if you've given a layoff notice, maybe something better comes along, you lose them. They, they, they've grabbed another job, you know, I mean, and this happens. So this is one of the reasons Rick has held off, because we see what we get, hard numbers, we've got time. You people don't have to approve it, approve this until, what, uh, May? We got another, six weeks roughly, six weeks, and it's gonna go to referendum. We'll see what happens with the state in the next, if we have to make hard decisions, and we'll make them. Right, Rick?
Yep, absolutely.
But after last year with all the kids at the high school, I think it was very hard with those decisions being made. And quickly last year, that the kids.
Protest.
More than anybody else last year. And they shouldn't have to do that again.
They didn't, and at last, there was no need to last year either. A lot of false information last year, and that's the high school.
Well, our goal obviously is not to have to reduce any positions. One of the things with the retirements is that we wouldn't, we're not filling those positions. We would just distribute those responsibilities. So there's no face to any of the real reductions at this point, and that's what we're hoping to continue.
Other questions, anyone here?
What's that?
Sometimes it's a downfall.
Yep, thank you.
We try, we try the best we can.
The problem is starting early in the process, and starting October. To sit and wait. To sit and wait. I know, must, might be a record. Could be a record. Did you guys have more? Did you guys have more?
Yeah. One's enough for me.
We got two back.
Have a great time, Brad, thank you.
It wasn't you, it just happened.
Who? He's good, he's really busy, really, really good. Doesn't get home till eight every night, so.
I came in Washington two hours ago, that's not. It's quick flight.
Hi, you're welcome, Pete, I'll, I'll try to get him up there. Okay, I, he's already responding back.
I hope that my view is okay, and I told everybody I was gonna have to say something to you.
Better get down there quick because they're gonna shut down.
Can we all sit here? So, what do we wanna proceed with for format here?
Well, I, I think everybody's had a chance to review, we've gone through each department. I think it's, would be prudent if counsel and talk about what their thoughts are and where you wanna go. Ask questions.
Mike wasn't there that time?
Huh? No, he's at work. He called late this afternoon and said that he's not gonna be able to get out. He's got some stuff he needs to get done.
He had a lot of interesting things to say after.
Yeah, yes, he did.
Yep.
What's wrong with this?
Bring him up?
The, and I wasn't there Tuesday, so it's a good time to be filled in anyways. And just one of the things to start even before we get into budget, is just where you, where your thoughts were. Was the bond, did you have much more discussion Tuesday night on the bond or?
We really didn't get into the bond.
We haven't had much discussion at all.
Yeah, we just, yeah, by the time we started, it was pretty, it was already after nine o'clock. The thought process on the bonds was, originally, we had, we'll take the bond out of it, but of funding a, the full to- a re- revow, the three hundred and twenty thousand, that was the proposal that Bill had given us. And also, funding all the capital projects that are still in, in the waiting period to finish up and take. I think at this point, we could, there's one, the PD work on, on the floors and stuff, we could take out and put that in a regular operating budget, if we have to. But the others were to finish the MTM windows, put a new roof on, add a, the office addition to the public works to meet our ADA compliance issues we have there. In Fisher Road, the Fisher Road Bridge. One of the things that we did talk about was that we probably have enough money to replace the bridge from our, what we had left over from the bond, because we didn't do Fisher Road last year. We could probably get the bridge done, but we wouldn't be able to pave. So it's, that's the thought. The other, the other thought that we had after our original proposal was to fund the revow through taxation at, around. And instead of putting it out to the voters, bring, fund it at ninety-five thousand dollars this year, ninety-five thousand dollars next year, and then the third year, another ninety-five thousand. And you could probably finish it till that fourth year. That was one of the ideas that Bill had had in one of his proposals. He had funded it a little over a hundred thousand. And then we, we have been waiting, we, we didn't hear from Anders Goggan, did we?
No.
We thought, instead of going out to bond, we'd just look at competitive loan rates. Sometimes Anders Goggan Bank and TD Bank are very, very competitive. The US Rural Development also has a loan fund that is pretty darn close to being as good and sometimes better than the bond bank. So that way, we could fund it, if, if you chose to do that, and the public chose to do that. You could fund it, starting the first, you know, July one, get the projects done this, this year, and then start to revow at the same time. But that's, that's where we were on several different options to look at.
The, um, any idea what we do have for money, the flowers left over from the road, the previous road bond?
It's around a hundred thousand, I think. Right around there.
Now, the, it would be kinda interesting to see it. And I know that would actually kinda offset that bridge, which we need to do. But the, the other paving that was, that we were hoping to do, did we ever give a list of the roads and what we, what we'd accomplished, or what, what?
I have a list, I don't have it with me. The last road that we had on the list to do was Fisher Road. We had enough money to pave it with what we had left over, and probably a little bit more, because it's a pretty short road. But not enough to do the bridge and the paving, especially this year, because the price of asphalt's gonna go right through the roof.
Not part of it, it's only just over there, it's not that stop, right?
Yeah, shortly after that, it doesn't go very far.
As I asked people, and they said, the other bridge was actually a book, so.
Yeah.
So we would only.
It's just the big one.
The, um, I mean, I, I think it'd be kinda, it would be nice, before we get into a public hearing, to find out as it comes, and just kinda get a rough idea of what we have, what we do wanna do with the bond. Because we were thinking about wanting to give it.
Yep.
Versus whether it's, would rather see it broken, broken up.
Yep.
Or totally removed, or, you know, how that would impact. I mean, the way it was initially figured into the budget, it would be a, it wouldn't be a real big impact this year. But my biggest concern, it's a hundred thousand dollar impact next year, which a hundred thousand dollars next year may be tougher to find than it was this year, so.
And the alternative to that is if we took the revow out of it and looked to do it, say, over three years, since we're still looking at ninety-five thousand dollars for three years in order to do that. I mean, unfortunately, everything that's in that bond needs to be done at some point. I mean, sooner rather than later would be good, but I don't think it's gonna pass. If we leave it together, it's not gonna pass.
Couple of things, and I'll talk to Steve a little bit about this, and this with, you know, my, my thoughts on the bond. And, you know, one of, of, you know, some of the council was the idea of if Fisher Road was a, it would be done with the bond money we already have, that would be, that money that needs to be done, that we have already in place. The, and I discussed it with Steve, and whether or not it was a good option or not is with the reorganization of the Public Works Department. If the director is now, how is he here, in the town office, do we actually need to do modifications to the Public Works? Actually make it assessable, or is it gonna be assessable as any other department here in the town office? I mean, is, is, do we actually need to do that at that point? The other small ones are on there, as far as like tile and carpet and police station, I wouldn't think that would, a long-term bond out for something like that, if they got down at that point. The two biggest ones, I think, that were still left on there is, is the, the MTM, the windows at the MTM and, and the, the revow. And I guess it's been questioned to many of us whether or not we wanna put that all together and what we wanna see truly, if people wanted to vote on separately.
And not to interrupt, sorry, but just to interject, included in that bond also was thirty-five thousand for the signing. On the firehouse.
For the two smiths.
Be included, maybe something you just have as a budget item.
And that's a project that's been put off for quite a long time. Needs to be done.
But I think it makes more sense to do it as separate bonds, rather than make all one big giant bond that, you know, people get scared of the revow, and they vote that down, then we lose all the other projects too. So, you know, I think if you, you know, they're not really all that related, if we put them as separate bonds, you give people the, the freedom to choose where they wanna spend the money, so. Unless we get something.
Yeah, I, I kind of agree with that too. I mean, you know, you put, I didn't realize we had enough money for the bridge. So if we can get that out, then, and if you necessarily don't think that we need to do the public works.
If you bond out the remaining projects, less the revaluation, next, you'll look, you're looking this year at about ten thousand dollars in interest to the budget, which will be about seven thousand less than what it would be with the revow. And, and next year, you'll be looking at about sixty-five thousand in principal compared to the hundred with the rebound.
Do we have any bonds that are gonna be retiring?
No.
Okay, this nineteen ninety bond, SOWA refunding fifty.
That's still a separate.
So that's not us.
No, but it's not part of the general fund, it's the SOWA.
Mike Bowie's idea was, and he recommended when we spoke, that putting each of the items is a separate question.
I agree.
And I'll be extremely frank, you've, you've put this revow out, how many times on town meeting floor? At least twice, Mike thought.
And then actually.
Three times. At least once since I've been here.
I've come out once before.
Yeah, so, and the public has rejected it.
If we're going to do it, we'd really have to do a mailing, at least try to get some information out there to people. Because if we just throw it out there, it's just gonna fail again, as you said.
It is, yep.
If we could send a letter, everyone explaining it, I think that the Trail Commission did that with the trail last year, and it was, helped that get passed.
So honestly, anything related with taxes, people shy away from, and after last year? I'm sorry, but I don't think it's gonna fly, I just don't, and I don't need to, I know we need to do it, but I just don't think it's gonna happen.
And people have heard such.
I've been out there probably more than anybody, visiting people, and I have, there are a few that do want it, but, you know, are, are agreed with having.
It needs to be done.
It needs to be done, but basically, it comes out, same thing. Just, I wasn't involved with it, but after last year, they asked, they don't want nothing to do with it.
But that fiasco just.
Right, they, a lot of them understand that, yeah.
Until a revow's done.
If we ask, it was because we hadn't done it.
I understand that.
And it was very compounded over.
Explain that, it doesn't go. If you try to explain it, it doesn't go.
People are worried, they don't know where it's gonna be.
People have a blind eye to it, they don't wanna talk about it, they're done. It's sad, but it's what it is.
Whether you're gonna put it in the budget to be done as a council decision, or.
Bond it.
Just gonna forget about it.
If we could get another year, let's say if we get, this budget came in at flat.
Yeah.
So the taxes didn't go up. We can bring the budget in flat, even with the bond. Yeah. There, or we can, I think there'd be a slight increase if.
It would be under, under ten cent increase to put ninety-five thousand in the budget to do, to start the revow.
If we could, we, what it's gonna be, we gotta get the trust back.
Yeah.
So we just came in and got the trust back, one year, even if we went out with a ninety-five, you know, not, ninety-five thousand, whatever, and, and did, started a revow ourselves. But if we get the trust back, then maybe next year, we can go for something else. And we can see about the. You'll never get a. You'll never get a, I'll tell you right now.
If we spend the ninety-five, we can get it flat.
You'll never get a revow done here, if you put it out to the public, and you won't. So what?
And if the numbers don't change, if you don't do the revow to change the numbers, you can't gain the trust because the numbers are still bad. That's, that's what people aren't understanding, without the revow being done, the numbers are not changing. Those property cars are staying the same. So you, you can't gain their trust by having a better year when those numbers don't change.
I think people.
A revow is the only thing that will change those numbers, to.
Make it fair.
Make it fair and equitable to all citizens.
And I understand, but I think people are more afraid of the change than they are of the injustice, and that's the problem. And everybody worries, is mine gonna go off?
The people that are happy with the way things are being run here are not speaking up, and they just pay their bills. We are at a higher collection rate this year than we were last year with taxes. And people are just paying them and moving on, they have all the services that they continue to have. And you still only have the, for lack of a better phrase, and I mean no disrespect with this, the naysayers that, that continue to come and not understand what the revow process is.
Anything that we do is gonna be, even on the best-case scenario, it's not gonna, no taxes gonna be affected for three to four years. Regardless if we started today, none, nothing that we would do would actually take, it would be three to four years.
But if we continue to wait another year, another year, another year, it's just inevitable that it's.
Mike, can we just put it out, okay, we only wanna bond two things? We wanna bond revow, and we wanna bond.
Roger, I don't think a revow is ever gonna pass.
What do you wanna do with the house? And Roger, Bill Van Tynan was, we, he was in this week and we were talking, and he really thinks that you should stay away from bonding a revow. It's, it's just.
He didn't speak very favorable of it, and I asked, I mean, he, he said it's rare, but it's kinda like, you know, ball money when you pay bills, it just really isn't a fair practice in the law.
How do other towns do it?
They just raise the money, yeah, through taxes.
Every person I've heard from, that I've talked to about this, their comment about a revow, if I put money into a revow, you're gonna make my taxes go up, so no, I'm not gonna. They don't look at the other part of where it's, they're refusing to acknowledge that, that's all they're looking at.
Bill, Bill is coming on the nineteenth to speak to the council and, and talk strictly about what is involved in the revow, what drives, what happens, what is the process? And he does a very good job of explaining it, and people trust him, from what I've seen. But what really drives the revow, or the taxes, is what we spend. You know, and as the re, as the value goes up, like we saw this year, the price of, or the mill rate goes down. And this year, the past year was just an unusual shift in, in personal property.
And the burden's actually already, most people don't realize that burden's already been put on them. And if you're someone that actually has a house that's been here in town for a number of years, that hasn't really done anything to it, that actually, they haven't got a permit for, or done, you know, added the garage, or putting a permit, odds are, it's gonna shift back a little bit the other way once the revow's done. But right now, I mean, people have got the hardest blow that probably they're ever gonna get, unless they've done something over and beyond what they should have done, that's the difference.
So we do it in-house? I say we do it in-house.
Now, go back for a moment, just, and again, I'll turn, but if we actually take.
Just that you showing up, you get special privileges.
I got some points to raise here. The, you said the ten cents, okay? What do we do not to have that ten cents to be, I mean, to be zero? I mean, I hate to say it, but if the school has to make the hard cuts, come zero, that ten cents, everybody really has to go for. I mean, so if you actually say, we're gonna do the trial. I mean, so if you actually say we're gonna do the trial for the budget, the revale in-house, does that exert this year the bond, even if we just do the MTM and the other stuff, doesn't make that big of a role? What do we need to do different if we were to fund the revale in-house to come with a zero percent?
For this year to come within a zero percent with the revale in-house, you would be looking to cut another, I believe it would be like under fifty thousand.
Oh, thirty thousand.
Then I personally think it would be done. I, I mean, I'm only speaking for myself, but Mike did get a little vocal after the meeting the other night, talking about some of the changes and I, I personally have been in agreement with some of the changes that do need to be considered.
Okay, I didn't hear that, so could you? What do you have to say? I was not here to.
Some of the wage adjustments, particularly, you know, the one point seven five is one of the things that seems rather consistent across the board. Got so much with the school department because there's one in one point seven five for the school department, but I think that we need to look at some of the, the impact of some of the step increases and or those amounts of money.
Just ten thousand dollars, so you're gonna.
Yeah, are being given, so that certainly has an impact and there's a whole lot that we can do about that because of the bargaining piece. But I think that we need to look at being consistent. I'm not opposed to giving consideration to any wage adjustments. I know that that needs to be done, but maybe not significant wage adjustments. You know, maybe those could be phased in as well. I mean, I personally in my own work world had to do a wage adjustment and we're doing it incremental. You know, it's, it's coming, but we're doing it incremental because that's how we can do it. And so I agree that wages do need to be looked at. I kind of think that can we do it incrementally? If you're talking fifty thousand dollars in order to pull this together, I really think that somehow, some way fifty thousand dollars can be found in this budget.
Yeah. And I agree, there's certain, certain things that we, that you've made aware, very aware this year that things are not, are imbalanced when it comes to some of the wages. And I think the idea of, one thing to concern me is that we were looking, really looking at, you know, a few this year, but there's many more that maybe need to be adjusted over a period of time. Would be the idea of coming up with a ramping or something, or stepping over a period of time, not all at once. And whether or not, how that can be affected or put in, I mean, definitely needs to be making aware of where deficiencies are, but you know, to get to that final goal, you know, how do we get there? I mean, unfortunately, it, it may not be fair that everybody do that one year, but we, that is an option. I mean, there's something to look at.
I'm in agreement too, that was what I was thinking of last night, that we should probably phase those in over a couple of years rather than try to take it all in one year here.
I mean, as far as the wages go, I've put a lot of time and effort into wage considerations. And I agree, I mean, in addition to wanting to keep the tax rate flat, I think you also need to consider that the employees in this town are also taxpayers as well for the most part. And the fact that part of your ordinance says that it is the intent, all in town, all town employees be paid salaries and compensation for comparable public and private work in the area and that will attract and retain well-qualified employees. Determination of salary ranges shall be based upon qualifications required, prevailing rates of pay for comparable work and other public employment in the area and financial policy of the community and any other relevant factors. And basically what I take that to mean is you look at things like the salary survey and get your people where they need to be comparatively to the community to keep and retain who you have. When you look at some of the staff that is severely underpaid, and I know we can work on maybe the amount of the increases being provided, but I would strongly suggest that we look to be as fair and equitable to both the employees and the townspeople. A ten cent increase is not huge. And if the school is unable to come in flat, they, they say they're going to and I have every, every party wants to believe that they will, but when you look at the considerations that they're looking at, they're just as up in the air with some of their, they're at the mercy of the state just as we are with the revenue sharing. And to dictate your budget and your expenses on revenues coming in is not being fiscally responsible to your operations. You know, you know what I mean? You, you just, you have to budget to, we're, we're providing a constant level of service to the community with a budget that we presented. And, and that, in all honesty, is a miracle that we came up with, with the consolidations and what we've been able to work with and still provide the same level of service and not have an impact to the community. You have, we're the third large, third largest municipality in the Andrews County and the fact we've been able to maintain that, I, I really feel you need to strongly consider and just go with the thought that you have to get these people paid where they need to be. I have a whole sheet here that I can go through if you want of support as to why, of what these people do above and beyond even some of their colleagues and they are so severely underpaid compared to their colleagues. And it's just something to really consider.
I don't think anybody's second guessing the study or the idea that it needs to be. As a counselor, I mean, last year was probably the most interesting year where I actually had people that I would never think that would be very vocal about certain concerns. And one of the things they actually came forward and said was live within your means and to be somewhat responsible in a budget with a family budget, if your revenues go down, unfortunately you gotta cut your expenditures. It's really hard to increase what you give to yourself if you lose revenues. I would be very hard pressed this year to come up with this budget with an increase. I mean, I would just, I don't think that we would be serving the people that we actually, that had, took the opportunity last year to be vocal to us. And again, as going back to Roger, I mean, if, to do what you're doing is awesome, there's no question about it, it's a lot of work in this year's budget to get where it is because we are very, not really losing services, we're readjusting our services, but not losing services. But at the other part of it, we're so close to coming in and being told people that this year you're not gonna, you paid the price last year, this year you're not gonna get the tax increase. Next year we can't hold any guarantees, you know what I mean? But this year, I think, we would have a hard time, myself anyways, coming up with anything over, saying those things. You know, if they lose more homestead exemption and that's where it goes up, let it be, but at the end of the day, when it comes down to, you know, us.
Unfortunately, they're not gonna understand that.
You know, I, I say that it will probably close to or under a ten cent increase to put the revale in, in-house. One of those revenue numbers changed and regardless of whether we took that fifty thousand out, we could still see an increase if that, if the revenue estimates are not in line. You know, I mean, it's a double edged sword with that.
And that's one of the things that we actually talked about last year when a lot of it came down, is the idea of trying to forecast or at least put a little bit of a bouncer in there for the forecast of revenues to make sure they were in the right place of doing regardless of what we need to do to make sure we're in the right place.
I mean, we've gone very low on our estimates with revenue to, to try to give at least a worst case scenario to of what we needed to get the budget to. But again, that's why I said and continue to say, it is, you're not being fiscally responsible to budget to your revenue stream because it, it can fluctuate and.
You gotta have something for a guide. Unfortunately, your revenues is really the only, the only guide you can use, you know what I mean? Because expenditures, we know always only go up and they usually don't go down. And if your revenue, again, with the budget, I realize you do a lot more budgets than I do.
Last year we were very fortunate. Last year, we, our revenue stream was down two hundred some odd thousand compared to what we budgeted. But we were fortunate enough that department heads, one, had managed their budgets well. We had, and we were able to roll back that, plus our overlay was high enough and we had a little bit of an increase of fifty thousand or so going back into undesigned fund balance. If, if we budget so tight, we may not be able to make it. I mean, I, I've been saying this for three years, department heads, just in their material costs and things that they need to operate are as low as they can get. I mean, there's no more room there. I'm not taking twenty thousand out of salt and they're gonna have to do without it and think to be smart about how we do it. But I don't trust Augusta to.
Everybody.
Not everybody. I just don't trust the system and how that will work. I mean.
I don't trust Augusta to make improvements.
Yeah, exactly.
They're gonna, they're gonna do what they need to do, but they're not, they're not gonna make, they're not gonna make the improvements.
I also want to make sure that we remember the presentation that we did. Go back to our, the original presentation that we had.
There's Augusta.
Talk about Augusta, there he is, right there.
Don't talk about.
We need to put you on spot, is it better or worse? It all depends how you.
How you look at it. Good legal answer.
But go, go back to the original presentation and, and all aspects of what we do, all aspects of the school is, are important. But what the largest driver of our, of our tax rate happens to be the school. And so something that you have to keep in mind, you know? And the school, you know, out of the three services that we asked the public for, public safety in the schools were the three top, top lists.
But I just think that we have to do our diligence to do the best we can as a group. And I mean, that would, to be, to me, is come and try and keep services and trying to, try to keep the budgets on a zero percent increase. I mean, that's, that's kind of the goal that I had initially coming into it and I think it worked very hard to get there. I think there's gonna be a lot of changes involved in that. And we're, we're not, we're not hundreds of thousands of dollars away from where we need to be. I mean, we are, on, on a budget the scale of what we are, fifty thousand, even a hundred thousand dollars, to me at the end of the day can.
Well, I think, I think.
Whether or not it can and not be will.
Well, I, I think the council needs to make, put their thoughts out there, what they want to do. I guess that's what we're here for.
Taking twenty thousand dollars out of the salt budget and then giving ten, six employees a raise of ten thousand dollars just does not cut it for me.
Six employees have not gotten a ten thousand dollar raise. Two, two employees were getting ten thousand dollar raises to put them in line with where they should be to their peers.
And one of them isn't even.
That doesn't even get them where they should.
Doesn't even get them to the average. And that person's been an employee here for eighteen years and, and he's a revenue generator for us and, and it's embarrassing.
If you're talking Mark Stevens, he's the only one that I would propose that would be eligible.
We're not supposed to be talking.
We're not supposed to talk names.
Okay, names.
So let's keep out of that.
All right.
But you've got employees who, and, and obviously the council has known this because they asked me to do a survey when I first got here and I did it. And we held off giving those numbers and, but all things being equal, we, we can make these adjustments and, and still bring the tax rate in almost flat, if not flat, depending upon what we do with some of the other stuff. And, and again, that amount of money that we're asking on the one seven five and the other adjustments of these three, three people, aren't gonna change that tax rate. That is not gonna be an impact in adjusting it, so.
You mentioned they were within fifty thousand, so I mean, that, the one point seven five and the wage steps, I mean, would do equal, probably equal that if not a little more, right? I mean, at the end of the day, with, with benefits.
With all employees getting one point seven five, it's.
With benefits and changes.
Yeah, well, not including their benefits, it's just on their wage, it's around forty, forty-six, forty, between forty-six, forty-eight thousand.
With the staff increases for the other employees also.
That's just the one point seven five for everybody.
So we're talking pretty roughly to sixty thousand, I mean, that range, sixty, sixty-three, five, in that range.
What are we talking on step increases?
I would have to go back to, I don't have those individually on.
The, I mean, it's, there's no question about it, you've done a lot of work on, on the budget and I think it's a really good budget, there's no question about it, I mean, both of you. And we are so close to where we need to be. I think just as a goal coming into it, it was whether or not we do a bond or any other stuff. I mean, whether or not, however we go about it, at the end of the day, we just gotta try to keep the services we have, which have done. And we gotta try to come in with the taxpayers, to me this year, showing these zero percent, you know, and, and that would be the goal. I mean, unfortunately, whether it's ten cents, twenty cents, or a one and a half cents, if the set one and a half cents is an increase, which, which, I mean, talking to many people would be, would be, regardless of what it is, don't make a difference. If you're gonna go ten cents, you might as well go a dollar because it's gonna be the same factor as the other random. I mean, that's, that's the downfall, you know, it's.
Psychologically, you're gonna put zero and even a cent, it's just a big difference.
And we can't, you know, we can't, we can't control the other factors on the other side. I mean, that's, I mean, with, with some of the other stuff and, and that's, and it's not, and there's nothing easy to do about it, you know what I mean? Unfortunately, that's, as a council, that's where I'm coming from, but it would, I only want to say.
And I'm gonna reach way out here and say something, I'll probably get shot for, but you know, there has been comments over many years that the school department just does whatever they want to do, they get whatever they want, it's, you know, nobody can say no to them. And they've done a really wonderful job to come in at a zero percent. And I think that we have the same obligation to do that.
If we go, we go ten cents, we have to really allow them ten cents also.
There are really tough, tough decisions that need to be made and I think that early on when we talked about this, as we gave instructions to Steve and, you know, Jessica's helped out quite a bit, we said that our goal was zero percent. And I think that we have an obligation to do everything that we can to come in at that zero percent. No, no way.
I agree.
And I do think that we have to.
You know, sometimes, I don't think we forget, but we have to remember there are citizens out there, and I've said this many years, there are citizens out there that are very nervous. There are a lot of industries, one of them, my husband happens to be in, that just, they're not rebounding the way they should. And people just honestly do not have, and even to say ten cents more, we look at that and say that's not much, but people get very nervous and for them to accept a revale and that ten cents more, I agree that they're losing trust in us. And is it fiscally responsible to do all the things we want to do? Absolutely. Give raises, do what we need to do. But we have to remember that, that times are very different than they have been in the past. And, and we have to remember that the citizen is also our priority, so.
That's what.
Are we also gonna be facing loss of revenue with the Farm and Nate Solotex property? Loss of personal property, taxes on that?
Not this year.
Not this year?
Not this year.
Nothing going on that?
If anything better.
Well, it's not gonna get better. I already heard that today. They were here to see us.
It's probably not gonna change much more than what it did so far.
No, it's, you're gonna lose about two point nine million in value for the coming, not this year, but next year.
So this is something we need to look forward to.
This is, I think it's real estate. There isn't much personal property left in the building. There's some, but it's, I think it's just one line. I think Scott had said it's a loss of about a hundred and forty thousand in tax dollars.
Personal property.
And, and real estate.
Real estate will have to go away then.
It's, it's going away.
It's going away.
How is that coming along if that doesn't get sold pretty quick?
No, I, the realtor who was handling that said that they aren't even close to that because that's the question I did.
So is Mr. Miller gonna be considering tearing that building down?
No, that is not even in the cards at this point. It's on the burner, but it's, they're not anywhere near. He was surprised when I asked that question because he's got two people. One, we know has the wherewithal to do what they want to do. The other one is, is still a question, but it's, that's still very much in the works. And we are pushing hard for several people that we, Scott and I know, to look at the Knight Solotex building and see what might be, but I don't have a lot of confidence in that because they're only giving us, they're only giving a month. They, they don't want to go through another winter. They have to heat this building, keep electricity there. They just don't want to do that. And in order to get that building up and working, they said it's, it would cost them about a half a million dollars. They just don't have the product line that can generate that, so.
Hence the building industry not rebounding.
Yes, exactly.
I think as far as recommendations from the budget advisory board, we will get together and we want to do it as one voice, one thing. I'd say probably what the next meeting, council meeting, that'll be the time for us to give our recommendations.
Nineteen. The nineteenth?
We have a public hearing Tuesday.
Yeah, but half of us are gonna be gone, so...
Is there anything the fourteenth will have? I, I don't have any less.
The nineteenth, we have the council meeting, and we could have more budget review. We've been trying to keep the agendas light. Bill will be here that night. And also, representatives from C and P will be here that night to do just a quick twenty, thirty minutes on the smart meters for us. And then, there's a presentation by Lisbon Emergency. I don't think there's much else on the agenda, so it could be a very quick one.
I think ours...
It would be very important for the, our board to give us their recommendations as soon as a public hearing which we can, because, I mean, within a week or so, we're gonna be pretty much done.
Yeah.
Yeah. I guess my questions, you've talked about the bond and the larger projects. Are there other departments and things that, as you went through the budget, you have any recommendations, thoughts, or anything?
I think all in all, I mean, it's a pretty bare bones budget. We haven't overspent in any area. I do think the salary increases, not that anybody doesn't deserve them, certainly. And I was an advocate of that several years ago. But, you know, it's just, can we do it? And can we do everything else we need to do? So those are the two areas that I think are, and the revale is questionable for me.
Yeah, I think you've done a good job putting together a budget here. And I wanna congratulate you on all the hard work you did. My, my only real concern is that, still that snow plowing with the salt and stuff. I'm still quite worried about that.
Honestly, I don't know a whole lot about road treatment, but Roger, you might know way more than I do. But isn't the brine that they make from the calcium chloride more preventive than salt itself?
Put it down first.
Because they put it down as a brine, which keeps it on the road, correct? And it helps it not to freeze and do all those good things. Salt, if you've ever watched salt, I have to pay attention. If you've ever watched salt be put on the road, oftentimes, it just kinda bounces off and it will go into the ditch. I've watched it happen on my road.
If you, if you know how to do it, and you mix salt and sand, you know, right combination, that is a better combination than either one of the others. And that's what they've done for years. That's why I said last, I'm, I will trust Marcus to do this because I know he knows how to do it. And if he doesn't know how to do it, I know somebody that lives up the road from me that worked at the state for years that can do it.
And the concentration of sand and salt mix is, the sand is a higher concentration than the salt. The salt's just very random.
The areas, the areas where we salt the heaviest are the main roads. And that's why we have well problems. Okay? And we have to keep that in mind because you can't keep going out and drilling new wells for people. And if the roads are, my feeling is if the roads are heavily traveled, those, like Route nine, and one twenty-five, and one ninety-six, just that traffic alone is going to get the snow off the road. And, and if you treat it right with calcium fluoride, and then you go behind that and put down sand with a mixture of salt, you don't have to mix as much salt.
No, you don't.
So I, I think that twenty, taking twenty thousand out and saying, we're not gonna mix salt as heavily on one ninety-six and one twenty-five and Route nine, you're not gonna be impacted.
You're not removing all the salt here. There's gonna be less than twenty percent of the salt.
That's right.
So I mean, it's not like twenty, twenty thousand is the salt budget, and the salt budget is, I feel, you know, is a hundred and ten thousand.
The way I look at it, I know the cost is not there, but fifteen years ago, if you looked at the salt shed, you saw what was in there, they used per winter. And then you look at it, like now, there's a lot more salt than they used to use.
That's right.
And they didn't have the problem with wells.
That's right.
You know?
So I...
You gotta give a crew a chance to show that they can do this, you know?
Yep. And I, I'm pretty confident that they can.
If it's not up the road, I'll call you.
Okay. I'll come pull you over.
Okay.
In other words, stop micromanaging and let the people do their job. Right.
So...
We'll try to get a ringtone to you next week maybe.
Basically, I've, I've heard that, kinda consensus is we wanna try to fund the revale, but yet still keep the, the budget flat, or the taxes flat. Is that kind of the consensus I'm hearing from everybody?
That's what I'm hearing.
It'd be interesting, I mean, that, it'd be interesting to see what the numbers we have, what comes out, what goes, to make that work.
If it's possible, yeah.
But, I mean, I know you can do it. And to be honest with Steve, the way you've gone through budgets this year, I mean, going through every individual budget does not, and this, this changes as things move around and, and not most of our purpose, because we actually consolidate some things. But at the end of the day, it's more, I think, as a council, and I used to always kinda wonder why Mike would say that, is, you know, give the manager a show of some paper how it works, you know? And Mike was a pretty good one for saying that. You mean, at the end of the day, it all comes down, because you have to justify it and control it at the other end. So, I mean, I just think that, I mean, if we can actually, you know, if we can actually give the town pay people the opportunity to pick the ones they want, I mean, I don't think that a revale one would go through. So I think it'd be a waste of paper money down there. I need to say that. But, I mean, that would be a tough one. So we have to decide as a council if we feel it's in the best interest of the town to do it, which it really injures us to the town if we don't reevaluate the town.
We don't.
It really is.
It's one of the decisions that we hit, we get paid for. We have to do something, you know? I'll agree with that.
We need to educate the public that we really, really needed a revaluation, and it is in their best interest to do it. Because when values go up, then milrite comes down. They really need to be educated. And it, it's the only fair and equitable way to do it.
I agree.
Some people are really not evaluating fair right now, as we all know, so...
Yeah. And so, they, they need to realize that it's the only fair and equitable way to do it. And it really needs to get done, and...
If, if you fund it through the budget, and you decide what capital projects you wanna put out to the public, we, you could do that in June on the ballot. And, and you'll know right then and there. If, and if they chose not to fund the roof, the windows, I mean, you may not need to do public works for us at this point.
Some, some towns, the people get together, say roofers would get together and on a weekend could probably do the roofing on the employees.
Very commercialized.
That's a commercial, it's really different.
But I, but the things that you really need to fix, one is, is the bridge. You put off the ET Smith Firehouse, we need to do the electrical work, and we need to do the siding.
That would have to be on same bond as, as MTM. It's the same equal...
Equal value. So you, you put those together, and then you put the, the bridge together. It's a separate question. Let the public decide, but keep the revale here.
I hope all of these projects are going out to bid.
Yeah. Also, well... Shouldn't you, I'm sorry, shouldn't you give some sort of informational with all of these projects, what our goal is? Because people don't always understand. I mean, our goal, obviously, is to keep our town buildings in shape. And a lot of people just, and MTM's been a source of contention, we know that with some. And I just think people need to understand, this is what we've been lacking for many, many years, not planning ahead, and this is where it's gotten us.
Yeah.
So, along with the revale education, I think you need to educate people on these projects too.
And I know Roger spoke to Gordon Curtis from the MTM board. And Gordon told him...
Definitely wanted a roof. He didn't say anything about the windows. He just said, I definitely wanted...
Well, I don't wanna heat the outside.
I was gonna say, we'll keep it, we'll keep it dry inside.
For some of the smaller projects, like the electrical at ET Smith, has it been looked at at all contacting one of the VOTEC schools and say, your students need a project for their stuff, we supply materials? You have your students do it? And I'm, I'm assuming, I don't know if your instructor has to be certified if they're doing things. That might be a way, or licensed, that might be a way of reducing the funding to do that quite a bit.
That's thirty-five thousand.
If it was more of a residential, or I happen to have mainly type house, but being a commercial like that, I mean, I think that'd be way beyond the vocational, even a vocational...
Okay. I was thinking like electrical's electrical, so...
But you were talking to them.
I didn't know if it'd have been looked at, so...
It's some mission critical, you have to care what fire station catches fire.
Yeah, fire station burning down, not a good...
Painting the outside, yeah.
Yeah.
Painting with the...
I wonder if the response comes up, okay?
The electrical station there, yeah. It's starting to get that way now.
Yeah.
It needs to be done.
I looked at it, and it's like, you're right. No, I'm not, I don't doubt what it needs, but...
We have lights that are starting to go out now on the road. We've got other stuff that's starting to...
I looked it all over. I'm, I'm well within agreement. It needs to be fixed.
Well, it's just like anything, buildings need to be maintained. And that hasn't happened. And it needs to be done.
This would put you, your projects, your building projects, take, it would take them off the table. It'd be done for now. For now. And now, then you do maintenance, and you make sure you take care of your buildings and fix it. And then your budget for that and your operating budget. I mean, that's, that's how we do our homes.
That's right.
You know? That's how we should be doing our buildings and taking pride in what we have. I mean, you know, when you get that campus commons building, which they've started on already, done, which is gonna be done in December, next to the MTM Center, that's gonna be a really beautiful, attractive area. It is already, but just cleaning up your buildings. And people got excited at the MTM building to see those windows going in, siding being done, so... We can't, we can't think back five years ago when everybody was complaining about it.
Nothing wrong with it being demolished.
Yeah, it's, we're, we're beyond that. It's full. Thank you, Mark. So...
I say if you break out the projects and put that out to Don, that he'll be pleasantly surprised that people will vote for that, but...
What, um, what do you, and again, I wasn't here Tuesday, but before the, the public meeting, what is the public meeting gonna be structured, like as far as your presentation? I would see part of the school, I would see...
This was, Rick is showing this one. We had, our goal was to hand out an updated sheet, basically what you have. Go through each line to say where the increases are, where the decreases, you know, what the decreases are. We could piecemeal parts of the...
Capital plan, I was wondering if you're gonna actually adapt the capital plan to actually mirror what we're talking about now versus the idea of putting, I don't know if you, if we're not gonna put it all with one number, I wouldn't think it would present yourself one, one thought.
Yeah. We can, we can talk about individual, we can, we have a slide that walks through the capital projects that we're talking about. And I can certainly address those.
It's fair to talk about the reevaluation because it's not a, you know, see...
Oh, no.
It just wants to be...
Gotta be transparent.
Exactly. So I mean, it's not, I don't think it's any problem speaking about the bond and the cost factor and how we really do it, but I don't think the other presenting, like we did before, is one bond, if, if that's not...
No.
I think the revision needs to be stressed. And I hope to see some advertising going out before next Tuesday's public hearing. If you want people to come, you've got to let them know that there is going to be a...
There is, there's, this public hearing on Tuesday, which is gonna be in the paper, there will be another public hearing, May third, in L S, LCS, that had to be advertised over a certain two or three weeks. And because you, we didn't really have any more than what we had presented, it didn't make sense. It makes sense to go back once everybody has decided that we're gonna break up the, the bond, we're gonna have a better handle on some of the changes that we made. Because your, your books don't have all those changes. So we can get those updated for you. If everybody is in agreement to the fact of, and this, you could discuss this on Tuesday or the nineteenth, you're in agreement to what you've talked about tonight. And we'll get everything updated and move on.
And I'm sure, Doc, that we can actually advertise on our sign, and hopefully the school possibly could do it on their sign. And between the two signs, I mean, someone driving Tuesday out will have a pretty good idea that this is gonna be a public hearing.
Yep.
Sometimes the credit union will put it on their sign too. I don't know if it would.
Yeah, I mean, it might just be sung at the schools too, you know, so parents have an idea about that. It gets a lot of people that might not see a sign in front of the town.
Also...
Send out an alert message at the...
They have that sign at the MTM Center that is not electronic, but that it ought to be put on that sign as well.
We can keep the kids from taking the letters or making naughty, naughty words on it.
More than, more than that.
Put it up on the roof.
So, just to summarize...
I cannot believe you just asked that.
To summarize where we are, like Jeff had said, so we're, we're talking about doing, putting the Fisher Road bridge work in the, in the request for funding. All our building projects has separate articles or separate questions. We're gonna recommend that we fund the revale through the operating budget. And everybody's pretty comfortable with it.
Would like to get a better feel, again, I, I think that would be the path. But I think I would like to get a better feel of what, what rose. Because it was more, it was more than just Fisher Road, just, just bone him road, the smaller part, and then all that was supposed to be repaved to that section, that was part of that bond. And it wasn't the idea of rebuilding whole road. It was the idea of just finishing parts that they didn't finish last time. Because all it does is have a thin coat on it, that's why it's pretty hard. It was never coated to some point.
Steve, was there ever an energy savings estimation done if you replaced the roof at MTM and the windows? Was that ever done?
I don't know if there's ever an energy audit done on that.
It might be, it might be a good way to sell it.
Actually, no, I actually do.
Because if you can save twenty percent in energy savings...
Gina, I, I do have the energy numbers on the windows, because I had to put those in the grant application. So I do have that, based on the manufacturers.
The roofs are against the, you're right. I think that's, I say there was insulation on the roof. Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah, but once, I think once you add that membrane on, or whatever the roofing is, I think it adds more.
Do they take the existing membrane off?
They don't. They can't, they can't put a bare roof on there after that. But they would be mobile insulation, or they don't think. But I'm not sure what that quote is. I mean, that's...
But probably the quality of that new membrane is much better than ever. Obviously. So you're gonna get a better...
The insulation that's there now, and what we put on, is probably a much higher R factor.
Yes.
It's still some of the FPM, so we know it's a saving. I'll say that's pretty real, yeah. Why is the window that, it's a single pane, fifty-two window?
The savings on the windows was pretty, pretty substantial, so, but I can get those numbers for you.
But that might be helpful in promoting it and people understanding why it needs to be done.
The windows would favor themselves with a...
Oh, absolutely, and the heating costs.
You're out with that, you're bringing it here.
Um, my mother, trust me, my kids' mother too.
Discussions on reorganization?
I, I think it'd be worthwhile at the public hearing to actually have at least a basic overview of how that's gonna be operated and managed and positions. And just so we have an idea, if someone asks ourselves, how it's gonna work out. Because at this point in time, it's been fairly baked through the budget, because it's just a budget. But I think it'd be worthwhile to see how the positions are being moved to.
We could actually maybe throw something, a slide in on that.
It would be worthwhile, because that will be a question, you know?
And go through the savings that we're seeing by doing this.
Any little bit that you can sell it.
Savings, savings, yes.
Well, it is. I mean, it's not a lot.
Be smarter.
We're assuming, and have we got any more information on the insurance? I know that, I know you took a medium number. But that medium number would be compatible to where we would be with a nine percent increase.
Yeah. There's not a big difference.
So we're still safe with that, you think?
Yeah.
I just got twelve percent increase on my new update on money, so...
Yeah, what we're getting is a better, better package for the employees more than anything else. And that's, that was our goal. If we could save money, that would be great. But we had so many complaints about this point of service beep, that, I mean, there are, I heard it the other day, if a public works, just, the bills are piling up on people, even with insurance. So, we're trying to help that cause. The state's gonna fix Durgo, so we'll be all safe.
Yeah, they got the rich. They all get half like...
We'll just keep jabbing.
Thirty thousand people on Medicaid, you said.
But, um, okay. We'll have more information at the public hearing to talk about.
Well, we have paper maybe prior to the public hearing, so we can actually see what.
Can you what?
How we can have any, are you gonna have any different paperwork as far as the final, your final number?
Need to update sheets for them?
Maybe put in that box of them.
Mason just announced today that the cost of paper's going up, so we should probably limit.
Well, not so much the whole, but actually just the, the, the few, maybe, some reason. Yeah, some reason. He said you can have it available.
I think you should have iPads, when I think kindergarteners are getting that much improved.
Yeah, the original public-
Okay, so it's not changed, I'm sorry, I didn't know if you were.
You should have a cool iPad.
Just have to think about if you add that in for elected officials, you know?
I need to give the guy one.
Give it to ourselves, so.
Yeah, me too, Roger.
Be enrolled in kindergarten, right?
This is, this is happening, come on, it's so easy, I'm like, you're bringing, yeah, mine up. I'm like almost back to advocacy and stuff, you know?
Okay.
I don't think my kids even know what an advocacy says.
Being considered, yeah.
I just wanna slide rule.
I don't think my kids know what an advocacy says.
I, uh, I barely do, but, or Scott, I don't know what a slide rule is.
I did, I do know the slide rules, but it's all right, after talking to people.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I guess so. Are you ending that, Mark?
All right, I think, anyone have any further comments, anything to discuss here?
You're good?
All right, then I guess we will adjourn.
I, I just wanted to say, my counsel, that WR Metals, when they came in today, were, I wish they were a company that we had here in town. They were very upfront, sort of forward, not jerking the chain, and they re-asked questions about why they chose not to bring this plant up.
The Knight Solotex.
Knight Solotex, yeah. And some of it had to do with energy costs.